I'm here.
We have to do a voice roll call, though, right, Mallory?
Right.
Yes. Are you ready for that? Do you want me to start?
All right, well, let me say it's March 23, 2021, the Planning Commission Udo meeting. Go ahead, Mallory.
All right, perfect. Fox?
Here.
And?
And?
Oh, I'm sorry. And I am participating via teleconference from beautiful sunny, warm Holland, Michigan.
Raymond?
Lynn Raymond is attending via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Dublock?
Dave Dublock is present via teleconference from his kitchen in beautiful Holland, Michigan.
Blunt?
Andrew Blunt is present and attending via teleconference in Holland, Michigan. Also in my kitchen.
Andy Kenyon is present and attending via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Owens?
Jennifer Owens, present teleconferencing from Holland, Michigan.
Anderson?
Brooke Anderson is present and teleconferencing from her basement in Holland, Michigan.
And I haven't seen Van Antwerp or Lizano join the meeting yet.
All right, sounds good. And we also have Mark Canelis, Mark Vander Plu, and Jenna Elswich from the city, and Christopher Corey, our consultant.
Right, so we don't have any staff comments, or at least I don't have any staff comments. Does anyone else have any staff comments, staff? No, it looks like not, so we can head into public comment now, Brooke.
All right, sounds good. Public comment at this time, and if you would like to speak, you can digitally raise your hand on the computer, and I will call on you, and Mallory will unmute you. And you will have two minutes. John Canfield? It's not unmuted yet. There we go. State your name.
This is the better side of John Canfield.
Okay.
Okay, on the website, hollandudo.com, there are three design goals stated. I'd like to address two of these goals.
Wait, wait, we have to have you state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. I'm Sharon Dwyer. I'm at 189 West 12th Street. Okay, starting over, on the website, hollandudo.com, there are three design goals stated, and I'd like to address two of those goals, numbers two and three. Number two, Udo is designed to embody the principles of economic and environmental sustainability throughout the entirety of the ordinance. There's an extensive letter, extensively researched letter written by Jay Wortley, chief economist, retired principal economist of the state of Michigan, stating, in fact, you are not meeting these goals for Holland in the area of single-family housing. The number of single-family homes being built in Holland is already at a record low, and now we're faced with a zoning proposal that will serve to convert existing single-family homes to multifamily units, reducing the market even further. Landlords will have the option to convert single-family rentals, those large enough to accommodate families with three or more children, into smaller units that accommodate young professionals. Families with children will become even harder pressed to find a place to live. In a recent letter to the Council and Planning Commission, I pointed out that current population of our older neighborhoods includes many non-white families, whether as owners or renters. Holland High School's currently 46.7% Hispanic, 7.9% African-American, and only 37.9% white. So I would ask the commission if you are planning to push ethnic neighbors out of our neighborhoods to make room for young, presumably white, professionals. Additionally, my research has indicated that an abundance of non-owner occupied rentals undermines the character of neighborhoods. Governing.com has published an article entitled "What the Rise in Renting Means for Cities." The article quotes studies that have traced impacts of increased rentals in cities, including daily disruptive conduct appeals for law enforcement to deal with, absentee landlords, transient unstable neighborhoods, higher rates for graffiti and noise complaints, less income from taxes, less involvement in local government,
Thank you so much.
less specific in neighborhood groups. I would question Udo's goal of economic stability.
Thank you very much. I see Kim DeYoung. All right, there we go.
Great. Sorry. Should've tested that. Anyway, hi, good afternoon. And I just wanted to bring up a couple points. You know, really, I think the first point that I want to bring up is that I understand that the Planning Commission has a right to change, oh, sorry, Kim DeYoung, 200 West 12th Street. I understand that the Planning Commission has a right to change some of the standards of zoning for the neighborhoods. But I do think because of several reasons, one, we're in a relationship with many of you. All of you, really, many of you are all our neighbors. Many of you we've elected to office, and some of you were actually paying your salaries through our taxes. So we have a relationship with you, and in that relationship, there should be respect on both sides. And I think, given our current situation, really being in a pandemic where people are notably more insecure overall, and they feel are threatening their own home and their greatest asset. So the fact that you're pushing this through with Udo seems inconsiderate in our relationship with you, especially because we can't meet in person to even have that conversation. So I'd like to say that. And then, further, I would just like to say that it doesn't feel, or seem to me, that the core city is getting a fair shake. For example, the expanding of Hope Neighborhood, the education district, into streets that are adjacent and around it seems unfair, considering the historic district also crosses over from the west side of River to the east side, as well as the snow mountain goes right downtown. It's even more walkable in that regard, where several months, we are not even really even push a stroller over here and get our way downtown. So the fact that they're getting special treatment doesn't seem fair. And just lastly, I'll wrap up. With the LGR, having an owner occupied situation, you're really not protecting the core city once again. And I would say that our neighborhood is one of the highest, or probably obviously the most high at risk, and the most dense, very, very comparable, if not even more so, some blocks on 13th between Maple and Washington, for example, where there's tiny little lots. So thank you, I have a lot more to say, but thank you very much.
Thanks. John Canfield, I can see your hand, but not your face. There we go. Mallory will unmute you here in a second. There we go. State your name and address for the record, John.
Again, Sherry's gonna take my two minutes. She's gonna finish up her presentation.
Okay.
All right, Sherry Dwyer, 189 West 12th Street. I'm now going to address the third goal stated in Udo, which is to protect Holland's beloved historic character and charm. But under your proposal, owners of properties will be encouraged to change the function of their homes. This requires internal modification of structures in the older parts of town. This includes houses that are over 100 years old. The preservation of historic character should be more than just a facade. In the case of historic character to homes, once it's modified, it's gone. Owners of properties can also add structures, cement portions of their lots. In one letter to the Planning Commission and City Council, I showed pictures of multifamily homes where this is already allowed. They are neither historic in character nor charming. And yet, more of these types of structures may be in our future landscape. The commission has refused to acknowledge that more people shoehorned into crowded spaces will mean more vehicles. Vehicles need parking. They need streets spacious enough to drive in two directions when cars are parked out on the streets. This is not the case in older neighborhoods. Two examples, 12th at Mabel around St. Francis does not allow two-way traffic when both sides are parked up. At 12th Street near the library, cars backing out of driveways do not have enough turning space when both sides of the street are parked up. And your proposal will be an aggravation of this parking problem. So overall, I would say in two areas of your goals, you're not meeting them. You also claim that you're working hard to make sure that you reflect the vision of all Holland residents and stakeholders, and I don't feel like you're reflecting the majority of the people who are on this website right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, looks good. Jenna, you can share the agenda again. And we will go to the Unified Development Ordinance items, one and two.
Right. And actually, I have updated the agenda. Do you see that marked as one, two, three on your screen? Because we do actually have one other item to cover on Udo. Okay, so going to the NMU Building Design Requirements. Going to share this item now.
There's somebody waving. It seems like they want to make a public comment. They have been waving. Maybe they had had their hands raised.
No, they did not. Before I moved on to the next item, they didn't have their video on, then I didn't see them. Jenna?
Oh. Are you going to, so you're not going to take the question?
Not right now, no.
All right. Okay, so do you see the staff report now up on the screen?
Yes.
Right. Okay, so going back to the Neighborhood Mixed Use Building Design Requirements, this is just a little bit of a recap as to how planning commissioners directed us. So requiring commercial uses in glass along both sides of a building, along both street fronts. Residential uses would all need to be internal to the site. Owners could apply for special land use to build less commercial, more residential along the street frontages, and Planning Commission would review special land uses to determine if the actual context of the site deems that appropriate or not. After the meeting, staff got together and discussed this a little bit further. And okay. Okay. I'm just, I'm looking at Mr. Canfield's sign here about not having that person be able to speak.
I looked through both pages, and there was nobody waving, and there was nobody on there. Their videos were not on, and I had moved on to the next item. I had paused for 10 seconds after the last person had spoken. I just want that on the record. We may go back and speak to them and let them speak for their two minutes, but I looked at both pages and waited. So if you are ready to speak, I will let you speak at this time. I see Rick Veenhoven. Nancy, I see you. And I see Rick. Rick, we can hear you, yes.
Thank you. My apology if I came in a little late there. I did raise my hand, I thought in time, as you had stated, but evidently that was not the case. But regardless of that, I will state, my name is Rick Veenhoven, 114 East 26th Street. I'm also the past co-chair of the Neighborhood Improvement Committee for the city of Holland. I would like to just share again my thoughts on this. I'll try to make them brief, obviously. Number one, I would like to know if anybody has looked into, if this was to go through, has anybody even looked into the financing piece of this, as we are calling these conversions, rather than duplexes? I'm not sure that makes any difference from a financing standpoint, but I'm wondering if the city has looked into whether or not these are financeable homes under the pretense of what you are describing. Secondly, we are looking at less and less inventory for young people who want to live in the city of Holland in single-family residences to be able to do so. Real estate prices are escalating rapidly. We believe interest rates will also be moving up, which they have already begun, making it more and more difficult for those who need affordable housing in the city to be able to purchase affordable housing. I suggest that mainly who's going to be able to afford these properties are investors, which again will only allude to what the previous folks and citizens of the city of Holland are not really in support of, nor am I. I think there needs to be a balance. I think we have already plenty of inventory that is used for rentals, and maybe even more than what we should now. But I would not be able to support this motion or agenda for the Udo in what it will do for real estate properties and those able to afford them. Finally, I would just ask that, given that this is the time period of a pandemic, again, I think there are plenty of people who I have spoken with who are not technically savvy, who wish they could say something, but have not the confidence to use technology to do so, to be able to make their wishes known. You have plenty of people who have already given technology the chance and be able to say we're not in support of it, but I think you would find there's far more.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Your two minutes is up. Nancy? Mallory's going to unmute you here a minute, and then state your name and address for the record. You will have to give her permission to unmute. Perfect, there we go.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Stahl, and I live at 121 West 12th Street. And I'm sorry, I did have my camera off, and I didn't realize it. I would just like to say that I'm feeling worried. I feel like it's a real red flag when questions are not answered. For example, I asked easily three times about numbers of cars per rental unit, and I never heard back from anyone until we were in a Zoom meeting, and then I learned that it's against the law to put a cap on number of cars for rental units. I was sold the idea that this would be great because it would be owner occupied in rentals, but now, and unfortunately, it's through the grapevine, I'm hearing that that was not legal. I know at one point the city lawyer said, I need to check into that to make sure it's legal. So I'm wondering about the update of that. And the other thing that I, this will be the fourth time I've asked, but I answer, is what is the regulations on driveways? For example, our next door driveway is about 12 inches into our property. And I think in the historic district, you're gonna find, like, these old houses and old structures do not follow property lines. And I do believe there is a regulation about how close a driveway can be, or how close a garage can be to the neighbor's property line. And I cannot seem to get an answer from anybody about that. And if there's not for owner occupied homes, will there be for rental?
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, thank you.
And Jay Wortley? Here we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes. State your name.
Yes, Jay Wortley, and I'm here with my wife, Mary. We live at 311 West 12th Street. And thanks for giving me this time to speak. I am one of those people that is a little challenged with technology. I forgot to turn my camera on, so I apologize. Thanks for giving me a little grace.
No problem.
When designing proposed changes to any existing policy, regulation, or law, whether by a commission or an elected body, it's important that there's good understanding of what the impact of the changes will be. As I've mentioned in the past, I'm a retired state government economist, including economist for the Michigan Senate for 18 years, and then chief economist under two governors, one a Democrat, one a Republican. And one of my key responsibilities during these many years was to provide unbiased critical analysis of proposed policy changes to identify and quantify the potential likely impact so my bosses could make informed decisions. Over the years, I have seen some very well-intentioned proposed law changes that had some very undesirable and unexpected consequences that the person or body making the proposal were totally unaware of. I don't think Holland's Planning Commission has received or conducted any such unbiased critical analysis on the proposed zoning changes. As commission members, do you know over the next five years, will the city's property tax base be positively or negatively affected by the proposed zoning changes, and by how much? Who are the winners under this proposal? Why are they winners, and can it be quantified? Who are the losers? And why are they losers, and can their losses be quantified? Do the benefits to the winners justify the costs inflicted on the losers? And can we learn anything from past zoning changes and the impacts they have had on Holland's neighborhoods? As I have observed your public meetings over the last few months, it is clear you've been working hard on this issue. But I have not heard you discuss important questions like the ones I just mentioned.
Thank you, Jay.
I'm speaking for my wife, all.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm almost done, thank you. So I don't think you are prepared to make a well-informed decision to the City Council on proposed zoning changes. More work is needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. Anything else? Okay. Next item. Jenna, you are unmuted.
Great. I did want to just respond to a couple of things. First of all, to the question about setbacks for driveways, there's no setback requirement for driveways. There's a setback of two feet for garages. Also, in terms of the question that we just heard, you know, we do not know what the future is going to hold. I'm pretty sure none of us do, right? What we do know, though, is that what the Planning Commission is trying to do here is just make something allowable. We don't know if people will even do it. Just to make something allowable for the future. We also know that zoning is not etched in stone, and that at any point, if something unforeseen to us today does occur, we can always go back and amend things that are not working, or that we feel, you know, Planning Commission feels doesn't work, or possibly won't work because of new information that we have. And then there was also a question about whether or not it was confirmed from the attorney. Yes, of course, anything that the Planning Commission is putting forward has all been confirmed by the city attorney. We wouldn't work in, you know, in a vacuum where we did not get the blessing of the city attorney. We worked through some of the details about the requirements for owner occupied, and certainly he is in favor or is comfortable with putting that forward. Okay, so moving on, does any other staff members have anything to say with regard to that, or anything else?
Jenna, I would just quickly state, too, in regards to Nancy Stahl's email, there was some email going back and forth. I found a copy of an email that I sent to her back in December responding to some of her questions, so Nancy, you may want to look back through your email files. Well, we did provide you with some responses to your questions. Perhaps we didn't answer everything, but we did respond to some of your questions, so.
Right. Okay, so going back to the item where we were at. Apologize, now it's not on my screen. To go back to it, one moment, please.
We see the document, or this is the NMU, correct?
Yeah, I'm bringing it up right now.
Okay.
Technology knows it's warm outside, so it's slow.
I'm having trouble getting on to that.
Okay, here we go. Okay, so following the meeting, staff looked at this a little bit closer. And, you know, and we came up with a couple of things. So first of all, some of the issues with where we landed things at the last meeting is that most of the new construction in NMU will likely be on single sites. For instance, the ones that we talk about the most are 317 Central and 431 Washington. And those buildings will likely be single buildings rather than individual commercial buildings like we have at 13th Maple. It doesn't then seem reasonable, as we reconsidered, to expect that those commercial buildings would have glass on both sides of their building at a corner. So for example, if you think about Minimer in Washington Square at a corner, that one side does not have any glass on that one side, because that's where they have the racks, and, you know, where they store the, you know, items for purchase and things of that sort. So they need that internal space. And another example being apothecary, and there's a whole plenty of other corner commercial that also does not have full glass along the street frontage. So what we did was, we looked at this and came up with another recommendation, basically to meet that intent. And what I'll do is just kind of scroll down to the image right here. I think that'll be the easiest way to explain. So what we're saying here is that the commercial use would be allowed on the, would be required on the front street. So front street is always the narrowest width of the property line. So it would be required on that street, and these hatch marks are all the glass, that requirement that this would have. So along the whole front street would be glass, and then And then along the first 25 feet of the side street, and again, this is just for corners, obviously, but also for for internal, you know, the, we'll talk about that in just one minute. So then it would wrap around, the glass would wrap around to at least 25 feet on that secondary street. And that would all be commercially used. So what we also wanted to get away from was the potential that someone could say, okay, well, I have a commercial use and I have this little hallway and I'm just going to glass that hallway. And then the intent of what we want isn't then there, right? We want to be able to have that visibility into a storefront. So we said, well, then let's make it so that there's a depth requirement. So the commercial would have to extend into the lot at least 25 feet from both streets. So that's why we have this as that commercial use. Now, what we're saying, though, is that after that first 25 feet, so after that glass wraparound, then you can go to allowing for a much lesser glass percentage, which we landed at 40%, which is what we have in the Form Based Code District as the, on the total frontage. So now we're not just at the two feet to 10 feet above grade, which is what this pedestrian glass frontage is about. This is just, you know, we want windows, but they don't have to be, you know, as many windows. So then there can be the continuance of the commercial use at this point. Or at this point, it could be, it could start the, oh, I'm sorry, no, actually, no. So, and then the commercial use does need to go for at least 50% of the secondary street. But after that first 25 feet, it doesn't need the pedestrian glass, then it can go to regular, you know, facade. But then the residential portion could also be along the street, but only glass. There wouldn't be an allowable entrance for the residential portion along the secondary street. Does this make sense to planning commissioners? Planning commissioners, if you have questions, please let me know.
One quick question.
Please raise your hand.
The requiring of glass at 40% down the secondary street sort of makes me scratch my head after the references that were previously used. If you need shelving, i.e. Minimer, you need it not with glass behind it, but somewhere where you could just have a wall there. So I guess I'm a little confused on the 40% requirement for glass.
Right. So our thought is that that would still provide for ample amount of wall space for shelving. So this is 40% of an entire facade. So if you imagine it's a 35-foot high, 35-foot high building, 40% of that entire wall space would still allow for shelving.
Okay, I was thinking we were just talking the first floor, 16 foot or whatever.
Right. So that first floor, the two feet to 10 feet is just this hatched, the black hatch that.
Right, but then windows in that area beyond that would not allow for shelving.
Windows beyond that, beyond this point would allow for shelving is what our thought is. Shelving right here then would not be allowed or would not be permitted. You're right.
So what you're saying, though, is that if there's a second, if there's a second floor and there's residential up there for that whole back portion of that wall on the exterior, 40% of it would have to be windows, so it could be potentially all upstairs.
It could potentially be, yes. That's beyond that 25-feet wraparound corner. Now, you could all, you could say that you don't want that wraparound to go 25 feet. You could say that you don't want to wraparound. We would think that you should have some type of a wraparound, but maybe 25 feet is too much. That's up to you.
We're not asking, we're not talking about that now. We're talking about the flat wall beyond that. I was, from your statement here, it appears that it needs to be 40% glass, but now you're saying all the glass can be on the second floor. Okay.
40% of the entire wall.
Although, to get to 40% of the entire wall, that means if you're only putting windows upstairs, that means 80% of the upstairs is glass.
Yeah, likely nobody will put it all on the top floor, but I mean, I don't know, maybe that percentage is too much.
Well, is it conducive to residential 40% glass? Is that too much if it was residential?
Well, that's.
On the first floor?
Actually, I think we do 30% glass residential in Form Based Code.
So why did you land on 40% here?
Because for mixed use, that's where we land.
Okay.
Is that the requirement in mixed use, Jenna, is the 40% or is that just because it needs to be more than residential?
Sorry, what do you mean?
So the 40% is that, I mean, back to Lynn's question, is that some, you said it because it needs to be mixed use. Is that based on what we have somewhere else in our code for mixed use buildings or I'm just trying to?
Yeah, in Form Based Code. So again, that's.
Didn't you just say that 30% was Form Based Code? I'm sorry.
30% residential and 40% mixed use in Form Based Code.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, mixed use is, it's actually 60% on the first floor and 40% like Jenna said on upper stories.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm okay with the commercial part of it. I don't feel like, I guess I don't need the percentage to be that high on the part of the wall. When you look at like Reader's World and even the businesses on 17th, is it? They have windows on the facade on the front, but then they have a whole side that they have a mural on. You look at Velo City, they're facing a parking lot and they have no windows. I don't know if these are good examples because they're all one floor.
Yeah, I mean, we wanted to reach a happy medium, right? Because before it was put it all on, you know, both sides, right? So this is a lesser requirement than that. So we're, you know, I would be fine with a lesser glass percentage. Do we think that 30% is better, 20%?
Jenna, would it help to change the regulation to just talk about the first floor? To separate the two, so we're not getting into, well, it could be above or below.
It's up to you. I mean, again, the glass.
My question is, is that the intent, like, is the intent of having this 40% that the main level is open to the public? It's, it shops, it's accessible?
No.
No. So what is the intent of having that 40%?
The intent is to break up the side of a building so that it just, you know, it has a nicer feel than totally brick, you know, wall.
I think it is a degree, perhaps, Jennifer, to allow, you know, vision from inside the building to outside and vice versa. So I think that there is some of that, you know, with the commercial aspect of it that can come into play. But I think it's, you know, Jenna's kind of driving at the main point, you know, is is to not have completely blank walls, but to allow somebody to have flexibility in where they're going to place the windows on the side of a building there, so.
I normally go along with the aesthetic part of this, but again, sitting in a neighborhood commercial district right now, I'm looking at the buildings around me. My secondary street on my own building is probably only about 15 or 20% glass. It's mostly, it's mostly wall. The grocery store across the street, there's no glass on the secondary side. It all just faces the parking lot. And where I would normally think, and I'm also thinking of like the Minute Mart in Washington Square, I don't think there's a whole lot of glass on that secondary wall either. And none of those seem like a big problem to me. I kind of like the wraparound in that first 25 feet. I think that's kind of nice. But you get beyond that and I think about Minute Mart, I think that Reader's World was another good example of that, that there's not really any glass on the first floor there for the remainder of that building. And I don't see that as being that problematic. You know, when I think of the tower clock across the street, yeah, there's glass, but most of it is above eye level on that, on the 8th Street side of the tower clock. So I'm not, I think 40 is high. I might even think 30 is high. I might, you know, I might be more inclined 20 or 25. And I like Andrew's idea of separating the first floor from the upper floors. Because otherwise, hey, if they, you know, if we got to do glass, they're going to move it all the way up into the upper floors. And I think we just have whatever the residential requirements are perhaps for the upper floors or maybe not at all.
Might I propose we eliminate that line?
Yeah, I mean, after you, Dave, you're talking about after the 25 feet.
Right. In other words, that particular line only talks about beyond the 25 feet. And I'm suggesting we might eliminate it.
Yeah.
Meaning not having, not having any window or glass requirement beyond the 25 feet.
In other words, if the design warrants it and that is what will look appropriate, I'm sure we can leave that up to the design professional.
I agree.
Yeah.
I think third floor, like, you could definitely allow for the windows or even require it, but I don't think we need to require it for the commercial piece.
Well, but it isn't just commercial. I mean, I just don't think, because we're also, because we're also allowing for residential right on the back of a building. And isn't that what the R is for? So let's, if that's essentially what we're encouraging for the back of the building, although it doesn't necessarily need to be that, we would want to make sure that they have the flexibility to do, to design that wall based on a residential property.
Right, because if it's residential, I think you have to have windows and opening. I mean, that's required, right? Now, you can have a brick wall with residential and.
Well, sure, as long as, you know, as long as the backside has plenty of egress windows in it.
bedrooms are required to have windows, but not every room is required.
A egress and egress window.
Yeah, that's true. Windows singular.
Okay, if I can jump in just real quickly, the image on the screen right here. So this, I think, is, you know, what we're talking about. So on the front of the building here, you know, you can see that there's the storefront windows, two feet to 10 feet above grade. That's how we measure it. Then there's the wraparound. Now, this is far less than 25 feet. So that could potentially be something that has changed. But now this is what we're talking about here, so that if we were to leave out that 40%. Now, this is, I would say this is still less than 40%, right, of the total facade of this wall. But if we leave out anything, then this is all just a blank wall. Now, in today's, you know, kind of best practice, planning, architecture, design, we really try to stray away from any just total blank walls on street frontages. So the thought is, is to make a, you know, happy medium here where, you know, potentially, so this is where there's, you know, shelving and stuff, right, for the store on the first floor. They probably have their back, you know, room here. So, you know, we don't need to be looking into that. However, imagine this entire building not having any windows. I think that then that, you know, becomes cumbersome. So my recommendation would be find, you know, for the first story or the commercial story, better said, that, you know, after that certain footage, that glass isn't required. But that certainly, you know, for the residential portion, and even, you know, I would say that upper story glass would be required for both the commercial and residential portion beyond that that footage, that wraparound footage.
Jenna, if we applied the standard with the 25-foot wraparound, I think that would take it almost to where the telephone pole is.
Yeah, so.
About there.
That, if you want, you can decrease that.
No, 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 I like that. I like that because I think that then, that adds for that commercial on that side of it. Beyond that, I don't think it's that as important, but I definitely agree with you on the upper stories to make sure that that glass is required on the upper story. But on that lower story, I think, you know, looking at this one, you know, barring the weeds in the parking lot and those kinds of things, that if you do a, if you did a 25-foot wraparound on that, that really, I think, makes a huge difference versus just what looks like, what, about a six or eight-foot wraparound on there right now.
Right.
Yeah, I'll counter that a little bit. I think what we're looking at is probably like a little over 10. And you got to have space for shelving and 25 is a lot more than the wraparound you usually see on the entryway.
So I'm looking at the side of Reader's World on Google Maps. And it's a two-story building, which I don't think I actually realized. But on the, they don't have the 25 feet in on 8th Street. They have eight windows across the second floor on the top.
Well, I think, does not the building code require habitable rooms to have a window? I mean, if it's all storage, that's one thing, but I would think we can allow the building code to dictate that, yes?
I'm not worried about the second floor. It's going to be offices or residential. And no one's going to build something without those. People like windows.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's specifically talking about the wraparound. Is the wraparound sufficient at 25 feet? Or is something of a lesser footage for a wraparound sufficient to be able to use that internal space differently?
I think 10 or 15.
Yeah, I don't, I don't love wraparounds at all. I think that murals are actually great on sides of buildings and add a lot of character. And I also think when you're looking at rehabbing a historic building, requirements like that for, it's fine for new build, but for rehabs, those are highly expensive changes. So realize, whatever you do, this is, this may prevent some older buildings from being redeveloped. It'll probably be fine with new construction, but it's going to make it a lot harder to rehab old buildings that don't have.
But we also have the special land use element in it, so context-specific. You know, a lesser amount of windows could be, could be allowable.
I think 10 or 15 is sufficient on the wraparound. 25 I'm okay with, but I think 10 or 15 is sufficient. I don't need any more windows on the main floor after that. But on the second or third or fourth floor, I think that there should be some sort of requirement, because I wouldn't want to see just an entire wall if I'm in an office, you know, because does an office require a window and egress?
It does. I mean, to another point, you know, it wouldn't necessarily have to be on that frontage, you know, side. But I think, I think everyone's in agreement that there should be some type of percentage for the residential or, I'm sorry, for the second story. I think we should, is where we should land on that. You know, maybe it's a 30%. I think that that's pretty doable for a second story, for, you know, upper stories. And then I think that now the conversation is just where to land on for the wraparound. So keeping in mind, right, that initially you wanted the entire extent of the building, so.
Yeah, we're.
You know, it's fine to change your mind, just letting you know that, you know, that's where staff landed, so. Give us a footage and we're good to run with that.
I heard Andrew say 10 or 12. I heard Brooke say she's good with 10 or 12, would be happy with 25. I said 25, but I'd be happy with 10 or 12. There's one set of numbers there I heard at least three times.
And I'm with Jen, Jennifer, that I'm about, I'd be fine with no wraparound.
Oh, I wouldn't stand for that because if we went back to 40% glass on that side, sure. But I would think at least 12 feet.
Okay.
Sounds like a lot of people are happy with 12.
So why 12 instead of 15?
I want 12.
Oh, Louise chained in there, too.
And yes, we are going a minimum of 25, I reread the section, a minimum of 25-foot deep commercial on the face. And only half of that needs to be glass. And only half of that needs to be glass on the second street, secondary street.
The depth of commercial has to be twenty-five feet into the building. And half of the secondary street has to be glass, twelve feet. Okay. Are we all good with that?
Yeah, I think, I think the wording ought to be a minimum of, minimum of twelve feet rather than the half, because I could interpret that as. If I've got forty feet of commercial, um, then you gotta go twenty, so I. Twelve.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
And these are minimums. I mean, the whole thing could be commercial if somebody feels like they wanna build a grocery store in my neighborhood.
Um, okay, so twelve instead of fifteen?
Yeah.
All right.
Yes.
Twelve wraparound and. Thirty percent upper story windows?
Yes, thirty, thirty's what we've got for standard for residential now anyway, right?
For form-based code, yes.
Yeah, and I think, I think it makes sense to match that.
Okay.
And I, I do have a follow-up question to all this.
Yeah.
Um, are we allowing a door to residential upstairs on the front street?
Um, yes, but the door, what did we say? I'm gonna, I'm gonna unmute Dan cuz. He's having things to say.
That's good.
And we did talk about that last time, Andrew. I remember we talked about the, an, a residential entrance on the front.
Right, like as long as it's glass or something, well, like that, Doc.
Yeah, we've made quite a change from where you guys were last week. I think we told you redesigned all the buildings.
No.
Um, because I think you guys originally, you went with commercial, the entire length. Of both street fringes with glazing on all three fringes to now reducing it to turns and stuff like that. That's, that's all fine. Your question about the doors, I think you originally talked about the doors coming out, um, on the sidewalk and didn't like that. You wanted to encourage them to, to discharge more towards the parking lot or something else. Andrew?
Oh, I was just asking if we're preventing a door on the front street, cuz I think we should allow it.
That's in doubt, on Eighth Street, it's all over the place.
Yeah. Yeah, with, whether I expressed it well or not last time, my, my feeling was that a door on the front, on the front street makes. Sense as well, because it worked, I think it works well on Eighth Street.
I think we should say that, you know, there, there could be a door, but that it's like a commercially designed door. It's not a, you know, residential door, right?
That one's a tough one. That one, I, I think is pretty generic. I could, you could say commercially purchased.
Well, I mean, like, it has glass, like a glass door. It's a, you know, it doesn't look like a residential door.
No, I'm, I'm not sure I agree with that. Um, you know, there was a great poster, I don't know, there was twenty years ago, I'm getting too old to have a good timeline with this. But it was the Doors of Holland, Michigan, and there were a whole lot of. Uh, entry doors that were doors to residences in commercial areas. And people had gotten really creative and really cool with what they had been able to do with those.
It was a calendar, wasn't it?
Something like.
I just keep going back to, if we're gonna allow for residential on the fir- on the first floor behind the commercial. Then we should be able to allow for residential features on that first floor. So we shouldn't be requiring a, a commercial-like door.
Yeah, I agree with them.
Yeah.
No, I wouldn't want a full glass door as my residential entrance. I mean, if you look. At Gazelle Sports, there's a beautiful wood door. Right there. And then the one for the windmill, it's inside the front door. So would we allow that too? I don't know.
True. I mean, that's all, it's just a different entrance.
Okay, that's fine. We don't, I mean, we just don't even need to mention the door then. It's allowed, so there's no, there's no need to.
Is, is what we have now, does that read as a door is allowed if we require a gra- glass around one hundred percent of the front street? Well, a door.
Well, a door on the front street would have to be glass then.
What if it's a residential door?
But if it's on this, but that door would be on the secondary street, not on the.
If it's going to the second floor residence.
On the, off of the secondary street, yeah.
I think we just were saying we were okay with a door to a second floor residence on the front street.
No, that's not what I was saying.
Oh, no? Okay, I, I.
I was saying on the secondary street.
Okay.
Because if it's on the front street, then you're.
Oh, yeah, okay, no, I'm good with that. Sorry, yeah, I'm good with that. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
So we're okay with it being on the, on the primary street, a residential door. A door going to a residence on the second floor, on the primary street, and it does not have to be all glass.
Okay, what I'm just going to say about that, though, is that, you know, someone could then do a really large door. They could, you know, like, a door is a door is a door, but, you know, then that could then take up. Um, the real estate for that, that transparency that you're seeking for the front street. My recommendation would be that it would be on the second, that you could have that door on the secondary street. Um, whether or not it's in the glass, wrapper on glass or not, but. Um.
Can we specify it has to be a standard-sized door?
Yeah. Put a width max on it.
Yeah, and we, we have requirements in commercial that those doors have to be, what, forty feet from one another?
Sixty.
Is it sixty? Okay.
That would address the whole, like, single, uh, commercial building, like, in one spot.
Well, if the building's not sixty feet, you know, sixty feet in length, I mean.
Well, that, that sixty feet is not a, that sixty feet's not a minimum, it's a maximum.
Okay.
Well, okay, I don't wanna throw a wrench, but I, I do wanna throw this out there. You're having this twenty-five foot minimum depth commercial on the front street. Is there an exemption for a stairwell that goes up to residential, cutting into that twenty-five feet? If there's not, then this is a moot point, cuz you can't put a door to residential on that side anyway.
Right.
That's true. And I think that is perfectly doable for people to have it on the side, the side street. I mean, it's not.
True, because these are single buildings. We're not talking about a block of buildings.
Yeah, and not everything is on a corner too.
So what about, like, on Eighth Street now, we have a few private entrances for, like, second-story townhouses or. You know, that look like regular doors. Um. How does that apply to this concept? Because we're kind of already allowing it.
Well, that's not neighborhood mixed use.
No, but it's a good example to look at.
Yeah, but it's not the same zoning we're talking about.
It is what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, I mean, if we wanna open up.
Change that one too?
No, Dave.
I'm just saying this is the precedent that we have already in a commercial area where we are allowing those residential doors that look different than. Commercial doors in our main shopping district.
Mm-hmm.
Refresh my memory, what do we call the zoning downtown in, in this document?
Central downtown.
Form-based code, central downtown.
And then you can have a residential entry door in central downtown?
It doesn't say you can't, and we don't, and the glass requirement is only sixty percent.
Okay, so yes, it's covered.
Oh, we're requiring sixty percent in our central downtown, hundred percent in our neighborhood. Doesn't that seem reversed?
No, because they're unique little storefronts.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, these are, you know, single properties generally that we're talking about. Unless there's, you know, a demo of an entire block or something.
You really have to look more at, like, Thirteenth and Maple than downtown, right, Jen?
Oh, there are.
Well, I would say you really have to look more at, like, you know, mi favorita. And the stores that are single, single buildings on a, on a property. Because for new construction, that's what is going to be the case in the, on these properties. Again, if Thirteen and Maple is all demoed, then, you know, likely that won't just be one big huge building, it better not be. Um, so, so that's then a little bit different. That's a little bit more of the character of Eighth Street. Um. But again, you know, we're, we're responding to what you had given our, us direction to do. You know, initially, right? So initially, it was the, the thoughts of these neighborhood mixed use. Um, areas for you were to look at things comparable to Washington Square and Thirteenth and Maple. So that's what we're, that was the context of where, of what we're doing, not looking at Eighth Street. Um, for context. So just going back, you know, if there's a twelve-foot wraparound of glass between ten, two to ten feet above grade. Um, thirty percent, uh, overall. Um, window transparency on the upper stories of that, of the facade. Um, and then. You know, not regulating doors at all. Doors can just be rubber. I think that that is what I'm hearing for most of you, though now there's a question as to whether or not there should be a wraparound at all. Um. But I think that that then goes way backwards to, to where, you know, prior to last meeting. So I heard that from Andrew. Is there anyone else, um, of the planning commissioners that don't think that there. Should be any type of wraparound or, or that there should be a, not a hundred percent? I've, actually, I think that the issue was not the wraparound, this most recent issue. The most recent issue was a hundred percent. Uh, window on the front street versus the sixty percent, which is the requirement in. Uh, on Eighth Street.
Right. Um. I don't need a hundred percent, but I would definitely want it to be a lot. Because you are facing a main road and what you're attracting. You're attracting people by the visibility because you want, cuz you're in a walkable neighborhood. You're on a sidewalk. You want people to walk in from the sidewalk. And I think when you have those windows, that facade, it has to be at least seventy-five percent of that, of that wall. Now, the windows can be separated so that you can display different things or whatever. But, um, I would want it to be a fairly high percentage, if not a hundred.
If we were to go to the sixty, sixty percent instead of the hundred percent, what is different? Well, how does it, what remains different than form-based code?
For the form-based code area, again, specifically CDT, where we call out that sixty percent. Um, the buildings, right, are just much, there's much narrower. There's less building frontage. So sixty percent is really a lot more on a building that's smaller, narrower than it is on a, on a wide building.
We're talking about potentially smaller lots here though, too, right?
Yeah, which means, though, that the buildings will be one larger building than, like, it won't be cut up. Most likely, like how it is in Thirteenth and Maple.
Mm-hmm.
Washington Square downtown. Um.
I'm not, I don't think there's a necessity for a hundred percent. I like the idea of sixty plus, and I'm, I'm still in favor of. Allowing if, again, if it meets, if it fits with what the developer wants to do in regard to residential above. I, I, I'm all for allowing there to be a residential access on the front street. Um, and, and if that, and whether that's on one side of this particular building or at some point in the, in the facade that. You know, the design still works, I don't have a problem with that. Um, but I think that, I think that what we're talking about is clearly having these buildings appear to be commercial. Within, within a neighborhood zoning district, you know, as Brooke was saying, we want people to recognize that this is a commercial building. Um, and I think the glass does a whole lot for that, but I like the idea of somebody that's living in a neighborhood commercial district. To be able to walk downstairs out of their upstairs apartment, right down onto the front street. And not have to walk onto a side street, or if this is a building in the middle of the block, that they've gotta go back behind the building. And then find their way all the way around to the front. I think that partly defeats the purpose of living in a neighborhood commercial district. I think the people that are gonna be interested in living in a neighborhood commercial district, one of the reasons they're gonna wanna live there. Is that they've got access to all of the, the commercial amenities that are right there.
Okay, but then to Chris's point, though, is not just the door, right? It's what's behind the door, and it's what the uses in that area. So if we're saying twenty-five foot. Depth of commercial space, do we then say except for a staircase that would lead you to. A residential space or to the upper floor?
That's a minimum of twenty-five feet of commercial space. You know, if they, if a, if the, if the building owner only wants to use twenty-five feet of depth for commercial space. And that prohibits them from being able to put a functional staircase to the upstairs apartment, that's a design decision that they're gonna have to make. Um. On whether that's gonna work for them or not, you know, and, and what we're looking at in the picture, I'm, I'm pointing at my screen. I know that doesn't help you guys. Um, you know, if you look to the left, left portion of that diagram, maybe the staircase is. On the far left of this diagram. It's more toward the center of the block, but it's over the deeper part of the. Um, of the commercial space. And they've, they've got shelving there, but the shelving is built in in such a way that it incorporates the staircase in it. You know, or maybe it's storage there with shel- with shelving in front of it, that, you know, we've got, we've got some creative folks out there. That can figure out how to use these spaces. I wanna give them opportunities to be able to do those things without trying to design the whole building for them at, at this end. That's not our job. We're plant, we're planning commission, not design commission.
Right, and where I was getting with the central business district, that's kind of like the heart of the commercial unit, and, you know, that really sets the tone for what works well. And so if we see those main level entrance doors or residential doors in our central business unit, which should be the most prescriptive in terms of. Glass and, you know, and then we're being even more perspect- prospective, uh, prescriptive in neighborhood mixed use, it kind of is. For me, it doesn't make sense. Give the developer the flexibility to make it look right with the intent that we want it to. Have the glass and the windows, but not say absolutely no, this can't happen, cuz what it will do is prevent projects from happening.
You just said what I was thinking much better than the way I was able to say it.
I, I don't mind where they put the door, even if it takes up some of the commercial space. Staircase. They need to put it on the front on the far right, like, in looking at your, your front street and secondary street map that you have on here, Jenna. Wherever they want and need to put that staircase for the functionality of their business on that commercial floor space. Then I think that's up to them.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how to design the building, so.
Yeah, and all we're saying, though, is that this first twenty-five feet is a commercial use. So a commercial use doesn't include a stairway to upper stories, residential stories. So we just need to write it in a way that that's exempt, and we can do that, that's fine.
Yeah, I think it's hard to exempt that as one sentence.
Okay.
Yeah, we just need to be specific about it.
Okay.
Um, okay, so I think that we've landed there. Now, in terms of what. Jennifer and people just agreed with, though, is that, you know, you're saying that you want flexibility for NMU. But at the same time, you've also said that you want, um, design review standards. And so that's something that Mark and I have worked on putting together. We went through this list with you, um, at the previous meeting. You had asked for more, um, design standards. Um, in order to review the residential portions of a building facade. Um, after looking at that further, um, two things. One is, in the green here, we are proposing to just say that upper story and residential. Portions of building facades. Portions of building facades shall be compatible with other features of the building. And with the positive attributes and materials of surrounding properties. So that would be of the residential properties or non-residential properties, whatever properties are around, so. We want to know if that sits well with you. Um, and then I'm going to just go over this one as well. And, you know, kind of what I've heard, well, we have heard from you in terms of what you absolutely don't want. The, you know, you want creativity for NMU, but you also definitely don't want. Um, more, you know, kind of contemporary design. Um, you know, someone had mentioned like, you know, Chuck E. Cheese colors or something like that. Um, so we had in here allowing the opportunity for the use of contemporary materials and design elements. And we're wondering if maybe we should delete that. Um, because the contemporary is not what you're looking for. And I bring us back to three seventeen Central as an example of that conversation.
I I think I don't have a problem with those two, Jenna. I think that there is the ability to. Use contemporary materials and design elements that are compatible with the existing character of. Uh, nearby commercial and mixed-use buildings. And the the example that comes immediately to mind is the Gordon and Margaret Van Wieland Library at Hope College. That was, at the time that it was built, incredibly contemporary, but it was contemporary Dutch architecture that was. Uh, was able to be compatible with the more historic Dutch architecture that surrounded it or that was across the street, I guess. So I think it's possible to be able to achieve those things.
I agree. I think I think you're right, Nathan. You you can do it.
I think so, dude.
Okay. So what about the residential portion? Does that respond to?
I think so.
I think it looks.
Yes.
I I think it's good.
Compatible with other features of buildings in the neighborhood. Yep, the positive attribute for material. Of surrounding properties.
Yep.
Yep. Can I ask a question about the glazing transparency?
No.
If we could change the ADV LT to the commercial space only. And allow a lower transparency for the residential, if they want it.
For the other upper levels?
For the upper and also if there was residential on the side street.
Oh, yes.
Um, okay, what should that lesser level be?
Say whatever they want, but.
We don't, we don't specify windows in this document.
I mean, we do in the form-based code, but we. Um, don't specify VLT in the upper floors. We don't have a, we we only, the form-based code only regulates the VLT at the first floor.
So maybe just change that point to the commercial glazing only.
Yeah.
Talking about.
Good, good catch, Andrew.
Okay, sounds good.
What does VLT stand for?
Visible light transmission.
Wow.
And that is defined, by the way, in the Udo, so.
Thanks, Chris.
In case, in case it was wondering.
Um, okay, so let me get back to the map. So so we're good with this, right? I'm going to take that as a yes.
We're all nodding our heads, yes.
Okay. What's that?
Nothing.
Okay, so this is our height map um, for form-based code. And just as FYI, we're. Thanks to Alex Epstein, who's our GIS tech and McKenna, we're we're getting really close to our maps being done. And I think they might be done, so that's very exciting news. Um, so the conversation that we had um, last time. We talked about um, the this area, right? You decided to put that into North Downtown, Form Based Code, North Downtown. So it occurred to me, oh, shoot, we need to figure out what height requirement we'd want for that. Noting that twelve you have down here, then this goes into nine, and then the lighter orange goes down back into six. Um, Mark and I talked about this, and we think that we should, that our recommendation would be to land at six. Um, being that it's a gateway, um, just as the eastern gateway. Uh, we we had recommended that that to be at six as well.
I like that, Jenna, because you're pretty close to the water as well.
Right. Does anyone have any other thoughts about it, or are you good to go with twelve?
Go through that one more time.
I was like, wait a second.
I like it, yeah.
Six.
Perfect, makes perfect sense.
Could you go through that sequence one more time from uh, west to west?
West to what?
East to west.
Okay, so this is six, all of this lighter orange right here. So all of central downtown is all six, and then east downtown is all six. Then you bump up to nine stories, just here in North Downtown. And then bump up to twelve stories here now. This looks to me, actually, south of Fourth, he has it in there as twelve. I think that. He had said six there.
Is the twelve a big digester?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, the digester is, this is BPW, so that would stay industrial. Um, Mark, what is this?
Commercial.
Oh. Uh, that might be the, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head.
That digester's on the other side of the road, Jenna.
Yeah, yeah, and that's going to remain industrial on the east side of river. Um. That might be where there's some warehousing and stuff in there.
Isn't it the climbing?
This is a second and River we're talking about?
Five-star realty and.
It's, uh, you've got Magna Global on third.
Mm-hmm.
And then second isn't. Necess, it's second doesn't extend as far as it, well, no, it does show truncated on the map, doesn't it? So there really isn't a street there. But Magna Global's between second and third on River.
Okay, so one thing is is here.
Can I ask about, so the digester, didn't we talk about having like the higher buildings around the digester where it was? Or having the higher heights to kind of camouflage it so it doesn't stand out? Will this impact? That plan at all, or?
Well, there will be, we'll have nine-story buildings just south of that.
Okay, so that's where the nine is, alright.
Stories is the digester.
Like ten.
Yeah, be a hundred feet. Yeah. Or over, a little over.
I don't know if anyone has it there, the drawings that Nick Relinski did. Comparing a tall-story building to the digester.
So what's the argument for?
We already have that conversation. We, but, you know, it's, again, you know, we have to take into consideration. The, you know, the fact that it's uh, the proximity to the water, whereas this is not close to the water. Also, the gateway into um, the city, you know, that, you know, do you really want to? See those big high rises just as you enter into the city? So just being context sensitive in terms of all angles, all all directions. Down here, it could go up to twelve, so that, you know, the the digester would fit in to that. And then nine, just just down here.
I'm good with the way you have it right now.
You do.
Okay, one item, though, that I am looking at, though, is just south of Fourth Street, this corner here. Did we say that that should be twelve, or should that be nine?
I wouldn't say six.
So I think it should either be nine or or twelve. Nine matches with here, twelve matches. Are you good with twelve?
Mm-hmm.
Because if they want to build nine, they can.
It's okay.
Okay, great. So then that map is done as well. If everyone's in agreement about the six.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah, and is that map going to be used in the Udo, that shading?
Yes.
God, I'm a little colorblind and I couldn't really tell between twelve and nine.
There's a legend on the right, which.
Even with the legend, like I just can't.
Some stripes and.
Yeah.
Colors are close. You should do all of it orange, because that's Nathan's favorite color. And then.
Just varying shades of orange, that works.
Stripes. Do some different designs on the orange.
I would think the graphic design people could do us some favors in that regard, especially with those of us who are somewhat color impaired.
Jenna.
So so the issue is, is that if we use too many like other colors, right, then. Will it be confusing between our current regulating plan? And then the, um, so here, here's our current regulating plan. Let me show you that. And by regulating plan, I mean the plan that um, regulates the form-based code, the map that regulates the form-based code. So you can see all these colors are used. Now, in one version, we have all of these colors used. Again, um, with the one through uh, five or not, no, I mean, for the heights. Not a one through, a six through twelve, basically, six, nine, twelve, blah, blah, blah. Um. But then we're using the same colors, so I thought that that was kind of confusing, because then it's like, wait, you you see the first map and then you see this map. Um, I mean, I guess we could use other colors, but then there's other colors are other form-based code colors.
No, what I was saying is you can keep the colors the same on every single map for each area, but you could like shade it. Like lines or polka dots or something like that.
That that's too, that's not going to be clear.
Okay.
Most people.
Yeah, but we understand you have constraints, just providing some feedback.
Yep, that's all.
Well, and I appreciate that feedback, but I'm just telling you what the, you know, where it's coming from. And I guess I kind of would like your then feedback as to would you prefer using. Co- other colors that do not, that go with other zone districts? Or would you prefer using that, you know, shaded? Version, like how I showed you.
I don't have a problem with the same color being used on two different maps to designate two different areas. I think that we're gonna, that users are gonna have to go, well, this map, on this map. Peach represents, you know, the central downtown, but on this other map, peach represents this other thing. And I've I've got to look at the legend on the particular map, because we've just simply have too many different maps, representing too many different things to say. We've got to, we're going to have a different color for each thing, unless you're, you know, unless you can be laying one map over the top of the other. You know, with all kinds of transparencies, but, you know, I think that we'd give Chris a coronary if we asked him to do that.
Isn't the one, just the map?
Or just a big check.
Isn't, isn't the other map a map of the height? Is it just, is that the single issue on that other map?
Yes, the other map is height.
Couldn't you just put the stories on each of the blocks? I mean, could you say six, twelve, nine on the blocks?
It's just not, um, it doesn't come out very well, because there's, you know, it might, for North Downtown, that's fine. But then, you know, things is just.
Yeah, okay, I got it. I, for that other map, Jenna, I think it's just that, it's just, it's just the the intensity of the color. They were all so much the same. Make one darker. Can you just do that? I mean, that's what.
Yeah. Just between nine and twelve, especially.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so we could do that, too. So which uh, which way do you want to go with it?
Make twelve, it's the nine and twelve, is that what you're saying, Andrew? Or that's where the problem is?
Okay, so the other ones are okay then, so two, three, four, that's okay?
Yeah, they're fine.
I like how you indicated where the marsh is.
That was mostly Alex's doing.
Oh, that's great.
Uh. Okay, so I'll just have him change, make that color different. And but you're sure you're good with the two and three, too, because two and three are.
Yeah, cool. I would say whoever's putting together, just provide feedback that we want the colors more different. And they're good at their job if they can figure it out.
Oh, but the problem is, is that we've had a lot of these conversations, so I just need your direction, and that's why. Why uh, I'm asking for it.
Yeah, I would, then I would just say push everything to the extreme, make the dark red darker and redder. Make the white yellow, uh, it's already pretty light and yellow, but then just expand the spectrum.
More con- more contrast, right?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Got it. Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Chris now. Mallory, can you give him? Screen sharing ability, please? And he is to walk us through the Udo as it stands today.
Sure, I'm going to show everyone uh, the draft, like Jenna said, as it stands right now. Hang on. Um, I think there's a lot of exciting stuff in the way that this is laid out and organized. Um, in in credit to all of you for various ideas on how to do this, and I think ultimately it it came out. Pretty cool. Um, we're going to have a draft on the website on Friday. Uh, and we do have a to-do list between now and then, uh, but I think it looks really good as it is. It, Jenna will notice the stuff on the to-do list. I don't know if everyone else will. Uh, but I'm just walking through some of the highlights of the, like I said, the formatting and the organization. Uh, this is the cover. Um, in the table of contents, you'll notice that all the section numbers on the left are underlined. Those are all hyperlinks. So if you click on one of those, you should jump to that section.
You magnify that a little bit more, Chris, make it larger.
Absolutely. I'm showing you whole pages here, but I can obviously zoom in.
That's great, that's good.
Sorry, Chris, can I interject and just ask you to touch on what we talked about before, like about, you know, where we are with uh. You know, planning commission comments and what the purpose of the walkthrough is and stuff like that.
Sure, um, as Jenna mentioned earlier, um, we want to make sure that we get all you guys' comments. In uh, ASAP, right? We've 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 received a lot from you guys, which thank you. Um, but as I mentioned, you know, we need to get a draft out on Friday. Um, so any final comments, we do need like as soon as possible. Uh, but we appreciate everything we've gotten so far. Uh, Jenna, is there anything you need to add to that?
Yeah, so the purpose just of this walkthrough is really to show you on a very high level. Uh, forest level, if you will, you know, looking at the the full context. Of the the formatting and things like that. Um, if you do still have standards that you want changed. Um, really, actually, at this point, we're going to ask you to bring them up at the public hearing on April thirteenth. Um, and then after that, we can, we can change them accordingly. Um, because at this point, this Friday version is where we have to be in terms of standards. Um, for noticing out the public hearing for April thirteenth. So that notice will be in the Sentinel on Sunday. Um, the twenty-eighth. Uh, and then we really won't be touching standards at all until uh, that, until after the public hearing. And only at which point if planning commission directs us to do so. Um, so that's just kind of the the two cents, and we're very proud of this document. And so we wanted to to share with you where we're at. And um, and certainly if there's formatting issues or any grammar punctuation that, you know, leaps out at you. Um, please do let me know on those, uh, because those we we can continue to change. Thanks.
Thanks, Jenna. Um, yeah, like Jenna said, once uh, we notice the public hearing. Um, and this draft goes out, we we're actually not allowed to make content change. um, and this draft goes out, we we're actually not allowed to make content changes until after the public hearing, so uh like Jenna said, any, any content revisions, we have to come up at that meeting and be specifically uh included any motion you guys make if if you're moving forward at that point. Um. So just to talk a little bit about the way sort of there's just the basic text works, um, and this section isn't the greatest uh example of everything, but there's some good stuff on here. Um, obviously, it's a multi-level list, right? Section one point oh one, A, B, C, D, and you'll see it goes down the line. Uh, but within the text, and this is different than a lot of zoning ordinances and something I think is is pretty exciting. Um, you see the bold and the italics and the underline. Bold is stuff that's just supposed to jump out at you. In this uh section right here, it's mostly just titles, right, of individual subsections. Uh, but later on, you'll see standards, any standard that has a number in it is going to be bolded, so it jumps right off the page. Um, and other key words and key phrases are going to be bolded. Uh, italics means it's a defined term, this defined in Article fourteen at the end of the Udo. Um, so if anyone comes across an italicized word in here, uh, the, oh, well, what does that mean? How do you find that for the purpose of this? That means that is in Article fourteen. And then anything that's underlined is a hyperlink. So anything underlined can jump you to another section uh within the Udo. I'm going to try to hit the highlights here, although, there we go. You see some of the graphics that have been included. I'm not gonna dwell on all of them, but I do want to talk about one point oh six here. Uh, this is it loads, this is the zoning map right at the beginning. It has actually its own section number, it's section one point oh five, it's just the map itself. And like Jenna said, we do have the maps just about locked. Um, and then what I want to talk about here in one point oh six, so this section is for someone who maybe has not encountered this document before and now has to use it, right? So it may be a homeowner or a business owner, uh, someone who's trying to figure out, whoa, what's going on with the city's zoning? Uh, so we have this first page is frequently asked questions. You see it's designed graphically. Uh, and these are basic questions about about zoning ordinance, about the Udo. Which zone district is my property located in? How do I determine what I could do in my zone district? How do I determine where my building can be placed and how tall my building can be, et cetera? And again, each of these are hyperlinks, so you can jump directly to the section that you need. The next page uh is actually a flow chart. So what do I want to do? And and you see that this is a spectrum, right? So install a fence or a shed, that's someone's backyard, pretty small scale. Build a house, build a multifamily or build it business, et cetera, or build a whole neighborhood, right? What do I want to do? That spectrum's up and you can see, again, we have hyperlinks that'll jump you to the section that you specifically need uh for what it is you're you're doing. Uh, the next section is a toolbox. We will actually have a picture of a toolbox here. Uh, and what this does is it gives you the details on how we calculate things, right? How do we calculate a setback? How do we calculate building height? How do we define different types of of property lines? Uh, so if there's any questions for that kind of thing, it's all found here. You can see this graphic, which shows lots of different kinds of lots. Corner lots, through lots, funky shaped corner lots. Uh, where do you, how do you find the front, side, rear, et cetera, lot lines? Uh, and then this continues for several pages. You see a number of graphics to demonstrating how setbacks are measured, how heights are measured. Et cetera, different types of lots, how the lot width is measured. Um, so all that's in one place, mostly graphics and hopefully answering those those questions. Uh, so that's Article one, it gives you that sort of overview of everything that's in the Udo and how things are are calculated. Article two is regarding each of the zone districts. So we have this list at the beginning, followed immediately by a summary table of uses. So uh, every use that is permitted under the Udo is listed in this table. And then you have this color show to chart based that tells you how it's permitted, right? Which is zone districts. Uh, whether you need a special use permit, whether there's additional limitations, which by the way is what the P asterisk and the lighter color means. Means it's allowed, but there's certain limitations on it. Or whether it's not allowed at all, which of course is the the gray boxes with the hyphens. Um, and this goes on for a few pages. The other thing that's cool about this is that all of these districts at the top are hyperlinks. Um, so if you wanted to jump to a district, you could find that. Um, and then this sort of describes it in uh describes what I was just talking about in words, because we do, of course, have to cover our bases. We cannot just assume people know things, right? So one of the challenges with formatting this is that we need to make sure that everything's clear while also being sort of graphically interesting. Following that, of course, we have this table of that summarizes the dimensional standards. Obviously, this doesn't get into a ton of detail. Um, but it gives you the 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 quick look, quick glance at the dimensional standards in each zone district. Uh, then we broke those tables up into three tables so that we can make sure there's enough space for everything to be readable.
Chris, I appreciate the, every single page has the headings, the charts.
Yep, um, and that hopefully will make it a lot easier to to read those charts. Um, then we have individual subsections on, of course, the zone districts. There will be a map right here, uh, within each zone district showing the the geographic extent. We have the intent in top left, then we get into dimensional standards. Um, and then we get into these use of parking tables, which you guys have spent tons of time looking at over the course of the last couple of years. And and those layout in each uh in each district. So I'm actually gonna kind of fast forward here a little bit through each of our districts. Um, there, there are some blank pages within this so that they all start on the same side uh to allow them to be pulled out potentially and given to a developer. Um, they don't, they aren't all either front and back or two pages. We weren't able to do that with every district, but some of them do pull out as a front and back situation. As I I'm gonna fast forward here. So at the very end of Article two, after all the zone districts, um, we have our over our PUDs and then we have our overlay districts. Um, so you see, this is the uh airport district. Or the airport overlay, excuse me, and 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 how that works, and that'll have its own map. Um, then we have the Hope neighborhood. Again, it'll have a map in that box and the waterfront overlay, uh, which is designated with a uh a map and a graphic. Then we, the last section in Article two is regarding the form-based code, uh, which, as you can see, has this use in parking table, just like any other zone district, but uh that leads directly into Article three, which is the form-based code. So the are, uh, so form-based code as you know, has its own sub-districts, it has its own processes, which are designated on this flow chart. Um, and then we talked a lot about building type, building frontage, uh, building envelope, right? Those are the three aspects of the form-based code. So that's how Article three is organized after our little introductions, which will include the two maps you just saw on this page and this page. And then each of these three things, building types, building frontage and and building envelope, we have a a summary table. Which designates which uh districts are permitted and just a summary of the of what's to follow. Uh, a quick added glance, we have a table of where in which sub-districts, different things are permitted, details on limited locations, and then for each building type, uh, we have a graphic that is labeled with some of the more specific uh dimensional or design requirements. And then those requirements are below, so that's consistent with each of these. Um, some of these we're able to fit on one page, others are two pages. For instance, mixed-use building, whereas commercial building, we were able to fit it on one page. So hopefully that is uh nice and clear for developers within the form-based code district. I'll go through the rest of the uh building types. We also have the frontage types, again, organized the exact same way, same design with the uh with the graphic on top, the yellow dots indicating certain things that can be labeled directly on the building. Um, and then this section kind of wraps up with the building envelope. Um, and CC's building envelope standards, we have a diagram here that shows our minimum setbacks and our maximum setbacks. So you see like the large extent the building cover and the minimum, as if uh as if those buildings were built next to each other, probably not that likely in real life, but hopefully that gives a nice added glance. What do the, what is a building in this district need to look like? And you can see for central downtown, we also have the the height and step back diagram, which other districts don't have. Uh, but in each district, you can see the way buildings would lay out in these diagrams. Um, from there, you know, we kind of wrap up with the housekeeping of the form-based code, like the waivers and such. Uh, Article four, I'm gonna fast forward through, it is our standards for individual uses. We've dressed it up with some pictures and tables where we could, but this is, you know, some of the text-heavy part. Um, as you can see here, things like, uh, as I mentioned earlier, anything with a number in it is bolded. Uh, we've folded our headings and hopefully this is, becomes relatively readable, given how text-heavy this article kind of had to be. Uh, Article five, sort of similarly, um, because this gets into some details on uh different design standards and fire code and and things like that. Uh, the the other thing about Article five, I think I should point out is that uh, like your current design review chapter, it has some areas that are summaries of other chapters, and those, of course, are hyperlinked. So you can get to the full standards.
Interject there real quick, that that'll be a good item, that that's what staff will use in the staff report. Right now, if you recall, with your staff reports, we um specify thirty-nine dash twenty-five, which is a rundown of all of the different uh standards. So that's what we would reference in staff reports um to you in in the future.
That's terrific. But Chris, once you hit that hyperlink, can you hyper, can you go back?
Can you hyperlink back? There isn't a, like, there in Article, you know, eight, there isn't a hyperlink to five point one zero. So I guess the answer is sometimes, right? So if there's a hyperlink that would take you back, sure, but there isn't. Okay, in some of these cases, there isn't like a go back.
But then you can just click on the sign and on that, you can just click on the side and that would get you.
That'll get you back. Or whatever you're looking for there. So Article six is landscape, and this is a sort of picture-heavy. As you can see, this is obviously, there's a lot in here about uh green infrastructure and and stormwater and that kind of thing. And we've sort of shown visually how these things play out with pictures and such. Uh, but otherwise, this one does get a bit text-heavy as well. Article seven is regarding, sorry?
Andy's favorite section, he's not here.
Article seven is regarding lighting, and again, we've, we've, we've done some things in graphic detail here, trying to demonstrate some of these concepts. Um, giving people examples of what's prohibited and limited and permitted in terms of science, in terms of, excuse me, light fixtures. Uh, showing what exactly a lumen is and on some of the technical stuff that we're talking about, trying to to demonstrate that in in graphic. Signage chapter, I think we did some pretty cool uh with the help of Tricia and Dan in particular. Put together these tables uh by zoning district, the the by zone district, excuse me, that lay out all of the different uh regulations and also show you that graphically and also in pictures. So hopefully that will help with uh sign applications. Article nine is another relatively text-heavy, but we do have graphics for things like this is where parking is allowed on a residential lot. This shows pedestrian access to a building that is set back within a parking lot, which is sometimes a hard concept to describe. We have a lot about bicycle parking, including pictures of what's permitted, what's not permitted, in terms of bike racks, ideas for different bike racks. You know, because I I think we will get, you guys will get some questions, oh, what am I supposed to do? There's pictures right in the Udo uh of what's uh recommended. We've also consolidated the bike parking standards here. They're also in Article two, but here they're consolidated altogether. Uh, and then we go through the rest of Article nine, which includes things like ADUs, uh, our fences, accessory structures, and all sort of the general topics like that. And I will continue to fast forward here. Article ten is something I think we're particularly proud of. Um, with regard to, we don't regulate streets, right? But with regard to street design being tied to zoning and put right in the Udo. And in terms of when you are regulating like a private road or a new development, what are those streets supposed to look like? This is very specific about a lot of that stuff, uh, and you can see in these, was it residential driveways? But in terms of street network requirements for newly built neighborhoods, in terms of street design based on these, based on these concepts of different zones and different realms within the right-of-way, uh, which are then listed out in these tables based on the type of both the type of district that surrounds the road, which designates as residential, or something to use corridor and and industrial or urban, and then major or local, and then you can kind of get, all right, what is this road supposed to look like based on its function and the zone districts that surround it? Subdivision section has been moved here and consolidated, so it's within Udo, uh, whereas previously it was separate. Um, and then we have Article twelve, which explains how you get everything approved, uh, which has this table, which replicates the table you guys have in your current ordinance, but I think is hopefully a little bit easier to follow and has been, you know, sort of vetted and and worked out, so uh, we're hoping this, this works out pretty well as far as, okay, what am I supposed to do? Very clear, they done on what your your actual application is. Um, and then we have, we have to get into the details of this stuff, right? This is the stuff we have to include, so people are, so it's clear, not just clear to people who are reading, but clear from a, why do I have to do that? Well, it says right here, this is where you have to do it uh standpoint, and that's where we get through our Article twelve. I'll fast forward. Article thirteen is non-conformities. Uh, so it's pretty short, and then Article fourteen is our definitions, as you can see, organized by uh by letter. Uh, and highlighted in in a little different format than we have some of the other text. So with that, I think as Jenna said, you guys should be really proud of all the work you've done. I think this morning we were talking and we talked about how we spent a lot of time in this process analyzing the bark on the trees. But if we could all take a step back and look at the forest, it's a pretty good forest. And and I hope that that even some of the topics that we're having some discussion about still as we move moving forward in this process, you know, there's still, there's a lot of good in here, um, and I think it's a lot to be proud of. This sort of design and format of your ordinance is gonna be unique uh around the state. Um, it it not only modernizes, but I think goes a step beyond and does some things that that we wouldn't, that you don't see elsewhere. So this may become hopefully a model for other places and uh really establish Holland as a leader uh in this regard. So that I'll I'll take any questions from you guys.
Chris? I saw in your models of the roads, um, especially in new neighborhoods. Um, we didn't include any bike lanes?
Yeah, I don't think we have a requirement for, well, let me say this, in, and I'm gonna go back to that. So we have a requirement in new neighborhoods for like, this is where your roads have to uh, this is the roads you have to build, right? I'm sorry, I need to go back to ten. Which I don't have a a quick jump for that. So in you, in this section.
I'm sorry, Chris. Two questions. One is, can you click on the side tabs to go back to, those are linked, try it?
They're not set up yet. Uh, if you guys want that, we can do that. Okay. So yeah, the, so this table says, all right, these are the roads in your new neighborhood that you have to build as far as connectivity, right? This is saying, build a road at all. Uh, and then these standards are regarding what the road actually has to look like.
Go back one.
She she's talking about the the design, feature zones and stuff, so that's.
Oh, there's a bike lane on this graphic, is what you're saying.
Right, but so in the people realm. Um, yeah, maybe, maybe, Chris, could we call that non-motorized zone rather than walking zone? Or actually, that's not where the bike lane would be though.
Bike lane, well, yeah, a cycle track might be here, a bike lane would be here, or potentially here. So there are some differences.
We do call it out, though. Where where do we call it out? And I think it's in the people realm, right?
Yeah, we do, it's mentioned here.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's included because we adopted complete streets a long time ago. So when we redo roads.
Actually, Jenna, it's in the, sorry, I'm sorry, Brooke, it's in the, it's a travel realm. Yeah, non-motorized vehicle lanes in accordance with the City of Holland's non-motorized transportation plan.
Yeah, but I think I've thought of and people are, can you go back up to people realm too?
Yeah.
Um, non-motorized and pedestrians as a non-motorized bicyclists and pedestrians. A non-motorized pathway. Yeah, and Brooke, in fact, the very first paragraph in this intent, it talks about the complete streets. Um, and so all of this is really designed for that purpose. Um, in terms of that graphic, though, Chris, can you just go back?
Sorry, I I want to show Brooke something in there, but we can look at the graphic, too.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe if we can I don't know, somehow fit, I I don't know where we'll fit it in, but maybe.
We might be able to replace, like, so we don't need, maybe we don't need to show parking on both sides. We could show this as a cycle track or something.
I was gonna say, take one parking route out and shift it over. This is, this is a two-way street, so that's different than a one-way. I don't know if we wanted any more examples, but.
I just, I think you're bringing up a pretty good point, Brooke, and and I think that's something, we we make, we need to make sure that we have something in here quite specific about this, because we 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 pride ourselves in Holland for being a bicycle community. Because we, we, we pride ourselves in Holland for being a bicycle community and we're trying our best to accommodate bicycles. And so I think. The more that we can put into here, the better, I think, or make it more prominent or more, you know, something that needs to be, so we don't have to be looking for it.
Three bicycles in that graphic.
Specified, I, but I agree that we should just add it to the. Image.
I agree. I want to show you guys the regulatory side though here. So because. You know, I said, okay, these are the roads that you have to build as a developer. What do those roads have to look like? Well, this all then applies. So. We have to build a road and, and these are probably going to be residential local, right? If you're within a new neighborhood, right? So we'll say residential local. So you are then required to build six foot sidewalks. If, if there's a non-motorized pathway envisioned in the non-motorized plan, you have to build that at ten feet wide. And then. This, so you know, that was the walking zone, but within the travel zone.
Residential.
Yeah, residential local. Believe we have something in here that says. Bike lanes. Unless that got cut at some point.
Uh oh.
I think we moved it up to, I think we called them. Non-motorized pathways instead of bike lanes and.
Okay, so it's, it's covered here.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just as an FYI, one of our next endeavors will be the non-motorized transportation bike or plan. So, and by we, I mean you as well. That'll be our, you know, one of our next projects. Because at this point, we have something that's pretty old and. Definitely Brian White, City Engineer and us, I've had a lot of conversations about updating it.
So not a question for Chris, but a, a comment for, for Chris and for staff and anybody who's worked on that. That looks wonderful. Scratches a whole lot of itches that, that I have. I love the formatting. I love the. I love the continuity of if it's italicized, it's a, it's a definable term. If it's underlined, we want to call our attention to it. If it's got a number in it, we're going to, we're going to bold it. And there are hyperlinks everywhere. And I love the graphics. I think it's going to make it very, very usable. For the members of the public, for, for residents, for our developers. I think that's going to be a great document. I think it's going to be really helpful for us as well. So thank you for all of the great work on that.
Thank you. And thank you guys for all your hard work. I mean, again, I, I kind of want to use this opportunity to take a step back and say, hey, look. A lot of you guys, all of you guys have been working hard for some period of time. Some of you have been here three, for three years. Working on this and. I know that we're, we still have some issues, but we're, we've done a ton of good stuff. So I just want to say congratulations and thank you for that.
Great. So does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I have a couple of questions, but not related to what Chris just reviewed. So.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Yeah, I just wanted to return, I should have done this before Chris started talking. I just wanted to return to a couple of questions that came up on. And during public comment to get some clarification. And so that I understand it too. There was a, the city attorney did make a, you kind of alluded to this earlier, but I just wanted to be clear. About why we couldn't include owner occupied in. TNR because, and then what I understood was that it was because there were already rental properties in that. In that zone district that were not owner occupied. And so we couldn't. Add that stipulation. Is that the way that, did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. So. So because separating in a, in an. In one zone district doesn't even matter if they're existing or not existing, even if we were to say, well. On these lots. You know, they have to be owner occupied on these lots. They don't have to be owner occupied. Then that's. Then that's difficult to, to provide the rationale as to, well, why these lots, yes, and why those lots, no. In terms of owner occupant, owner occupied. Unlike in LDR, in the LDR Zone District where we're saying unless a ten thousand square feet and greater. You can have this use. It's not that you can have this use, but it could only. Or you could have this use and in other places you can have that use and the, the standards are different. It's, you can have this use and this use shall be owner occupied.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, it is, it is because it's in one zone district and it's the same use, different regulations for the same use in the same zone district.
Okay, thank you. And then this, yeah, go ahead.
Just follow up on that. I just want to clarify too, for the public. That the owner occupancy requirement is still being recommended for accessory dwelling units in LDR. So the only place that it was, that it was taken off the table was in TNR for the multifamily units, but not in LDR with accessory dwelling units that's still in place there.
Correct. And any accessory dwelling units citywide, one unit does also need to be owner occupied.
Great. Yes, thank you for that, John.
So and then the other question I have, this has come up a couple of times. I think people are noticing that there, we're not making any changes except expanding the Hope District. And so I was wondering if you could, if you could tell, and I don't know this, so I was wondering what. When we decided on the, the Hope District designation, when that happened and what the rationale was around that.
That would be a Mark question.
Mark. The ED, the ED district, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So that, a lot of that work came after. The last recession, the great recession, so to say, when there was so many properties being. Transformed into a rental properties, foreclosures all over the place. So it was at that time when we, there was a lot of. Kind of committee work, a lot of reach out and stakeholder. Working with, with folks in that entire area. Cause a lot of, a lot of the homeowner, homeowners in that area really felt like they were being threatened. And because there were so much rentals going on in the first place and then. You know, student housing on top of that. So we, we really, I think that was back in, I want to say about two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. Lynn, in that timeframe or thereabouts. That we rolled that out and it's, and it's been in place ever since. So.
So that was the Hope neighborhood, right?
Yeah. So was that the question?
Yeah, actually, that it was our initial question, but then to change. To the ED Zone District.
Okay. So when, when was the ED district brought on, brought online then?
Oh, maybe I was wrong. I was talking about the Hope District, I think. Sorry about that.
Okay. So that, I'm sorry.
So you, you answered the question then.
You did, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask one last question? And maybe we just need to answer it later, but the, a letter from Padnos and their attorney with some concerns that they had, and I do like everyone read all these. I don't know if, is, is staff planning on responding to that? Or I thought there was some. Some good feedback items in that one, and we haven't really discussed that at all.
Yeah, I would.
So we forwarded that to our attorney, Ron Vanderveen. He's aware of it. And his, his suggestion at this point is. You know, to just go forward unless planning commissioners specifically. Want to. Go somewhere else with it. He doesn't think that his, his, you know, his support of it, I guess, hasn't changed. Mainly because it's not the intent. The intent. Is not to have a pathway through an industrial area. Which is clearly expressed in the, in the Udo and in that section.
For me, it wasn't the pathway question. It was the, that one, I get it, but was really related to. The property that was going to be rezoned from industrial. On to central downtown that they flagged as a concern for them. Is there some justification as to why that needs to stay or can't?
I, so you're talking about the property that they own that's on like near the civic center?
Right. So one of the letters was about an existing property for their operation of their stormwater processing plant. And how they wanted it to remain industrial. And not to be rezoned. And so I guess my question on that one is. If they own it, I just, I don't love rezoning anything from industrial to another use, because I think that's the highest and best use of the property in most cases, but. Now we have a building owner who is an industrial. Strong employer asking for it not to be rezoned. And so as we go through and question some of these other options or items, that's when I want to question as to. What's the reason to rezone it or? What's that response on that?
Well, we're, we're not looking to rezone anything now though, Jennifer. I mean, is all the industrial. Properties that are located downtown. Were a part of this proposal. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, is, is they will remain industrial. For as lo, for as long as they want to remain industrial.
She's talking, they're talking about the Paddas property that's on Eighth Street. So we had decided to put that all to CDT. So that's just the one, you know, the, the, the large Paddas property, we're not touching. Or properties, I should say, both on the east and west side of Pine. But I don't know, I mean. The, the thought about it was that. That. The vision, right, was to have this kind of march down to the waterfront with mixed use development. And so that's one of the properties that, that is along the way. It's a, you know, accessory property to their business. And it's, it's up to planning commission. If, if you, I mean, if we do want to discuss that. For either we can discuss that, but we need to discuss that either now or at the planning commission meeting. On April thirteenth.
They will retain, you know, full non-conforming privileges. And that can continue on indefinitely. So they can continue to, to use the property for industrial purposes. They can make improvements. To it, you know, with, with some limitations and so forth, but they. They can continue to use that, Jennifer, basically indefinitely for, for industrial uses. It'd be a legal non-conforming property then in use.
I think that was our intent. That was the discussion that we had.
Is it contiguous to their other property though?
It is, so.
Which one?
Does someone have a. Chris, do you have G I S open or?
Oh, I can mute. I can pull it up, although I think you've got it here.
I think it's right. It's one of these two properties. Mark, do you know which one it is?
That's the VFW that you're hovering on right there. So it's, it's those two, that one, and then the one to the west. The one right above the W. For West Eight Street.
Oh, yeah, here.
Yeah. I think that's, that's the one they're talking about then.
Okay, so Paddas is up here. This, you know, we, we just extended a CDT all the way through. This is a park. That's just where we landed with that. Again, for the vision. That the city has had for the, the mixed use development to go down to the, to the water there. I guess.
That's the address. Okay.
What's that?
I don't know. I have it on the story map. If that's helpful at all, maybe it's not.
I can sort of see it on both sides, Jenna, that it makes sense that all of Padno's property would be the same zone district, like they would all be. You know, industrial, that would make sense to me. On the other hand, I do hear what you're saying that we want to, we're, we're creating sort of a vision here and what we're hoping to happen in the future.
Yeah, we, we do Lynn have some properties that are split zoned. You know, one parcel has multiple zoning on it.
Right, that's true. We did talk about that the last time.
That was some of our Washington, South Washington.
I'll just add to the twenty seventeen master plan. Does call for that entire area, basically, you know, Ninth Street North. To be our waterfront. Waterfront downtown. Planning district. So, you know, rezoning, rezoning it to form-based code is definitely in alignment with the master plan.
I like, I like it the way it is.
Me too. And nothing changes for them, right? As Mark said, they can continue to use it as it's being utilized.
Yep.
And I think that's fine as long as they get a response back that says that in some way or communication, or maybe you've had it. I just. From reading this, it. Seems that they're unclear that they can continue to use it the way they've always used it and.
You're just encouraging good communication.
Right, right. Good communication, good feedback, good dialogue. I mean, they're, they are, you know, a great family who creates really wonderful jobs for this area and we want to make sure that. You know, that they know that we appreciate that and. Do not respond to this in a productive way and just speaking through attorneys. I don't think it's the best route.
We have two good friends that work there, so. And they really love it. It's a good family.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, I've got to make a little bit of a comment because listening to all of the public comments that we've gotten. It really brings to light the fact that Reaganomics has definitely worked. And, and yes, the rich get richer and trickle down is working effectively in the housing industry.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, so I guess the question that we have is, are you feeling comfortable with bringing this forward to. To you for April thirteenth for the, the public hearing. You know, be helpful just to have that nod from you. You feel comfortable. Again, you know, if there are any other larger standards that are kind of hanging. That you've been, you know, thinking about on all of your spare time. You know, please do let us know about them. However, we really won't be able to update the document until. Until you provide that explicit. Instruction to us, to staff. With whatever motion goes before you. Or with whatever motion you make on the thirteenth. And just to reiterate what Chris had said, the Udo as will be presented to you on the thirteenth. Will be up on the website on Friday. We're working on the public notice. That will be in the Sentinel on Sunday. And then we will be having a virtual public hearing. On April thirteenth. That way, anyone who, you know, wants to participate, I mean, right now with capacity, we would only be able to have. Twenty-five people total in that room. And although people can line up, et cetera, et cetera, who knows what kind of a day it's going to be. Whether, want people, yeah, we wouldn't want people to have to be in their. The outside listening or, you know, for their turn to come in and. Yeah.
I'm really comfortable with it going forward. I think it's a terrific document. It's just, it's so much better than what we've been working with for so many years and. And I, I'm really quite proud of just having been part of it. I think it's terrific. I think staff has done a great job and listened to us, listens to everybody. And I think, I think the consultant really needs to be commended for the work that they've done and how responsive they've been, how long they've stayed with this even though. Long time ago. I think.
Yeah, so many meetings that Chris joined us on.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would totally agree with that, that I. That I, I appreciate all the work that Chris has done over the course of the last three, almost now three years. And it really, the document is really, it is really exciting to see it all done. I would like to say that comfortable is a, like, I'm comfortable with the document, but I'm, I am. Uncomfortable with the fact that there are still people who are unhappy with, with portions of it. And, and I, you know, I feel badly about that. Because I do feel like we did. Put a lot of work into it and that it feels like. because I do feel like, um, we did, um, put a lot of work into it and that it feels like it has, it, it represents, um, I think, um, of years of, of input, not just, um, just, uh, the last several months, although we've made modifications over the last several months as well. So it's like, so I'm sort of, you know, I'm kind of, like, I think it's, I think it's great, but I also understand that, that, um, it is frustrating for folks who, who wanna see something different. So I just wanna lay that out there, that, that it's a mixed feelings.
I echoed that as well, Lynn. Um, I think that, that anytime we put together something this, this big, um, you know, it's 342 pages is what I saw on there on, when Chris was sharing his screen, um, and making, making this, this big of a stride, there are gonna be some folks that are not happy, but I'll tell you, I'm, I am very proud of the process. I'm really proud of the people that were involved. I've only been involved in it for a year and a half. Um, some of you have been involved in it for twice that long. Uh, it's been a lot of meetings, but I think that the process worked. I think that one thing we really need to make sure that the community understands is when, when we were working on this, what was it, uh, last September, October? And we said, you know what, we're, we're not getting as much public input as we think we would like to have in this process. We reached out to the community and frankly, the community responded. You know, that I'm, I'm very happy with the fact that we had on one of those meetings, what, 144 people signed in to a planning commission meeting. Um, I've been to an awful lot of planning commission meetings. I've been in an awful lot of government meetings. That's the, I think that's probably triple the number that we've had at just about any meeting I've ever seen before. Most cases, we just have a handful of people. Um, I don't think that COVID has impaired the public's ability to make their voices heard in this process. And I think that this group has done a great job of listening to the public and making changes as a result. The, the document that we've got in front of us today is very different than the document that we had in front of us last fall. We reached out to the community, the community, um, reached back and we responded to that. And I think that we have come to some very, very good compromises, some very reasonable compromises in, in where we are and what the community has asked us for. Um, and we've heard a lot of comments from people who have not necessarily been on these meetings, but in terms of emails that we received and very importantly, from the 2017 master plan that involved an awful lot of public input and public outreach during a time that was not COVID-based. And our citizen survey, the scientific citizen survey that was done by the Frost Center, um, just within the last few months, where the public reiterated what they said in the 2017 master plan. Um, what we are putting forward in this document, I think reflects what the majority of the people in Holland, Michigan want. Um, it'll be interesting to see what the, what the city council does with the recommendations, cause city council does not, uh, take the recommendations of planning commission, uh, whole hog. Uh, we've seen that as, in a number of meetings in recent months. Uh, but, but I think that if we're able to express the community what's here and share with the community what is actually in this document and what it says, because while there are a lot of people that understand it, I'm still seeing a lot of comments from folks. I'm still getting a lot of input from folks who clearly do not have an understanding of what's here. Um, I still hear people saying that they think that we're going to force them to change their residences. We're not. I hear people saying, what, they're gonna make me have a rental, a renter in my house? I don't want a renter in my house. We're not doing those types of things. We're just providing additional options for folks who may choose to take advantage of some of the things that are here. So I, I share that, uh, that bit of concern, Lynn, about the, the fact that not everybody's happy with this. But I've only been in office for a year and a half. I've come to learn very quickly. There isn't much that I do on a daily basis that makes everybody happy. Um, it's trying to find that, that road of the middle to try to make as many people happy as we possibly can, knowing full well that there are gonna be people that are not gonna be happy with what it is that we're doing. Uh, but again, I'm really proud of the process. Thank you all for the incredible hard work. Many of you have worked many more hours than I have, many more months than I have. Um, thanks to staff. You guys did stellar work. And Chris, thanks to you and your folks as well. Um, that's, I, I'm really proud of what's out there. So thanks for indulging me.
Yeah, as a parent, you also learn very fast that you cannot, um, keep everybody happy all the time. No, I, I've appreciated everybody's input and, uh, I think that the pandemic definitely put a wrench in things, but we were able to move forward and the pandemic didn't shut us down, and I think that was a good thing. And everybody had an opportunity to, to voice their concerns and their opinion in the public as well, through email, through phone calls. And Mark and Jenna, you guys were turning phone calls and emails constantly, and I really appreciate that as well.
Really. And to just reiterate, you know, to those people on the, in the public on the call, you know, please do let people know, as we have been letting people know, that this is not the only venue for providing your feedback. Um, certainly, we understand that there is a lot of people that do not have access or do not feel comfortable providing, uh, comments in person, in person or virtually in person. Uh, but there, you absolutely can, um, people can, can call in, people can, uh, write letters in, people can email in. Um, there's a lot of, uh, different opportunities available.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I personally appreciate all the education that all the people that have attended these meetings have got. Because having been involved for years with be it zoning board of appeals or building code or whatever, people just don't know until they think it directly affects them and suddenly they realize the building, the planning commission has put together an ordinance that, uh, that actually has my house number on it. And so it's been fun to watch people learn what's here and what's changing.
Yeah, I, I've been very impressed with the, the depth of knowledge that, uh, some of the folks that have, have joined our meetings have had. It's been really impressive.
Yeah.
All they wanna be.
One I would say too, I mean, with Fred leaving, we'll have a spot on the planning commission, so I'm sure you're gonna have applications up there. People wanna get engaged and involved. I mean, that's the best way to influence the processes, to be part of it, so. Love more voices at the table.
Is the agenda done?
The agenda is done.
Yeah, maybe Jennifer's point is a good transition for me. There are gonna be two open spots here.
What?
Yeah, I know.
Andrew's moving to, no, I'm just kidding.
I am moving. No, you're right. It's not just because Fred was leaving and I didn't feel like being on anymore, cause they get to hang out with Fred. Um, but I'm moving back home to Chicago.
Oh, are you really?
Yep. So that'll be this May, and I plan on sticking around until Udo is out the door. This is the plan.
So you're gonna be on the planning commission over there?
Um, we'll, we'll see. I'm not gonna dive in at first, like I did with Holland. I'm gonna play it a little slower, I think.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
No, that's too bad.
Yeah, yeah. My planning commission means a lot to me. I thought about sticking around just to serve on planning commission, but we're cutting down the meetings to like once a month. It's just not worth it. If it was every week like they've been. I don't know if you guys are willing to stick around for.
We can, we can do virtual meetings, Andrew, forever if you want.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You can teleconference from Chicago, you know.
Yeah, I probably shouldn't have a say in regulating a community I don't live in.
Yeah, I won't, I won't get into the requirement that you be a city resident in order to be on planning commission.
Yeah.
Well, I, I did my best to try to get Andrew to stay, but he, he was without a big Udo project in front of him.
Right.
He's just gonna get bored and
Yeah.
move on to greener pastures.
He said, how big of a check you need, do you need? And I said, there's just not enough.
Even if you triple what you're making now.
Yeah, I offered to double his salary, triple his salary. He would, he had none of it.
Hmm, well, that's a bummer.
Yeah. It's disappointing to lose both of you, you know.
Guys we missed.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Fred is, do you have people you can give us a list of, that you'd recommend?
Yep. As, as Jennifer said, there, there with the openings, uh, we, we've got a lot of people who have become educated over the last several months in the process and what planning commission does. Uh, and I really hope that we've got good people who step up. Those applications are available, uh, at, at the city's website. Um, and you can just type in, uh, to be, I think it's how to be a volunteer, something along that lines. Um, I looked it up yesterday. I, I don't know what the exact web address is, but I, I think I Googled how to volunteer to be part of, uh, City of Holland and popped right up and the applications are there.
There's a spot there for it. It's good.
Wonder if, um, whoever designs the website should put something on the main page.
I'll ta-, I'll talk to that. I, every now and then I, I talk to the people who are on staff, so.
But not just for planning commission, but.
No, no, for all of those, all of those volunteer things. A big button right on the front page.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, fat, somber note. Thank you, everybody, um, for all of the work that you've done. Um, and we are looking forward to bringing this to you on the 13th, so.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Thanks.